I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, for those called or roll call, starting on my right.
Counselperson Josh Harn.
Counselperson Brent Fire.
Mayor Jimmy John King.
Counselperson Craig Anderson.
Counselperson Jeremiah Olgin.
Looking for approval of tonight's agenda?
I'll make motion to approve.
Any additions from staff?
None.
Second. You have motion in a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Uh, next we'll be looking at the regular meeting minutes of July twenty eighth, twenty twenty, and be looking for a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Motion to approve, do we have a second?
A second.
The minutes of July fourteenth?
July twenty eighth, twenty twenty.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You better check your knees or nails, they move. We got a motion in a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. That takes us to financing budget. You got the accounts payable with the additional listing there? Yeah, it was East to. Do you have any questions? Anybody?
I had a question on the, I had a question on the Fulton. Is that covered by insurance, son?
Uh, yes, that, that's being covered by insurance and we are, we worked with the insurance adjuster and sent them everything that we need. We have not gotten the reimbursement check back on that yet, though.
Okay.
Is it back out there already?
Yeah.
Cleaned it up fast, too?
Good. Any other questions on accounts payable? If not, I look for motion to approve.
I'll make motion to approve.
A second?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, that'll carry. That takes us on to motions in general business. The first item tonight under motions in general business. Something I can't find, the first item.
Got it.
No, I don't know where it is. Cheryl sabotaged this.
That sounds like the next one.
Girl Scout troop forty-five oh fourteen will be presenting their ideas to add amenities to our dog park as part of their bronze award project. Due to COVID nineteen, they were not able to present last spring in person and created a video for us to watch. Troop leader Mary Becker, there she is, and a few of the girls will be in attendance to answer any questions we may have. The park board will be reviewing the proposal on Monday, August tenth, and will have their recommendation for the council. They're gonna play us a video now, so that we can watch it, so let's take a look at the video.
It was really quiet when I watched it, didn't we get into it?
And right now, the dog park looks kind of like this. There's not a lot there for them to do.
There's not much for dogs to do. There are some priorities to include, but for the people that run the dog, but not much else to do. Even the trees are on the outside of the fence if they can't or are not, they're like on the roof.
This is what the dog park would look like. With their permission, we'd like to make some improvements. People would like a place to sit and watch while they're on school. The biggest improvement would be the easiest way for us to, uh, we can build one way to do it for each side.
They're willing to, they're willing to camp the climate and over and out. They'd like to build some equipment to keep the dogs busy and help them get more exercise. They also want us to be on one side of the area so that we can have other type of dogs to come and play with.
We're also wanting to plant some trees inside the fence so the dogs have spaces they can rest and chill out. Their people can stand in the shade on hot day. We also, we should probably plant them near the south and so that, so they can chew when the sun is the hottest.
We plan to ask people for relation to wood, plastic, and metal legs. Some of us know these networks in construction and we think that they'll help us get some materials we need. We plan to ask for help building the equipment, too. With the COVID nineteen lockdown, it will be harder to run rate your second emissions. So we will have to limit our ability to what we're ready to perform, but we will do as much as we can.
Each of us will work at least twenty hours on this project.
If we start building fifty foot seg-
I think that would be a disaster.
Exactly. Um, it, it just, it won't work for the future. And really, we don't have a minimum length of road that can be built. But fifty feet, maintenance wise, constructability wise, does not make sense for something we're going to take ownership of for the future. So, in a way of negotiation, would be to say, okay, we'll move forward and get plans, get an development agreement in place for the entire roadway. Get a grading plan done for the rest of this area that actually fixes some of the drainage problems we have out there. Um, and with those elements, allow the building permit to occur for that next four-plex. Except for occupancy of two of the four not be there until the road's built.
So as, if you put the plan together, I mean, he'd still, once the plan's approved, even if the road's not completed yet, he'd still be able to start building the four-plexes, right?
Correct. Yep.
So, because I can see, I respect where he's coming from, and I understand, I totally admit it on the affordability wise. But, but the other side of me does, I'm very confused on building the streets in fifty foot chunks. And that, I'm not saying it's impossible, I'm not the engineer, but listening to the engineer, I tend to agree with that. So, I mean, I'd like to find a landing spot here somewhere.
So, that was kind of what was thought of? He would be able to start on that four-plex, get into that eight-month process, the road could be built next spring, he'd get occupancy for all of them.
So, in the meantime, though, if you were to get that whole, all settled, and have the plan getting going, working with you guys, he could still, he could build that four-plex, he'd just only be able to sell two of them in the meantime, or, or whatever they do.
We tried to blend everyone's kind of requirements. Requirements.
Well, no, I get that too, because at least he could get some money coming in to help pay for some of this.
So, my question says, recommend that Hemmer submit a preliminary plat where Mr. Hemmer said he's already submitted, didn't you say he submitted a plat?
Well, it's already platted. That, that whole parcel's platted already.
So, the right-of-way is platted in there, um, and this was before my time also. Um, so, review was actually in the plat, but a rating plan and the street plan needs to be reviewed to meet current standards.
And I've asked Mark, uh, you know, well, my engineer, to get the information, you know, get our new, uh, plans to you.
Good.
And he's working on that currently. I just spoke to him, it was happening again.
Alright.
So, so, you know, that they would, you know, meet your specifications.
But just so you know, we would require the entire street to go away, not just fifty feet.
Well, yeah, I guess that's, I mean, so that's your decision, that's, in other words, is the board, the board, the board not holding on to them?
No, we got a board on it.
The entire recommendation is a compromise.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
What are the drainage issues today?
So, the, um, undeveloped portion of land, um, how it meets into what's already developed and built. There's just some drainage grading problems that are causing pounding. Or, um, if you look at the end of lane, if you have the aerial in front of you, um, the unit, the very end unit on the west side, um, there's actually no drainage, or no slope away from that doorway or that unit at all. The entire side block comes into that doorway or into that side of the house. So, a drainage well would need to be corrected there. Um, the unit off of Clubhouse Drive on the corner of twentieth, there's a lot of drainage problems there. And when the road is built, those could be taken care of.
And certainly, we, you know, we take care, like we've always done in the past, we take care of any problems we have. We use our line.
I don't have to be sure.
That won't be your home, so what's that?
That's a problem, we just take care of what's happened, why is he called right there?
Well, I want to think about it, Dan, if you agree to do this, you'll be shovel-ready on all the rest of your lots, you won't have to come back and even just start building.
Yeah, all it takes is money.
Yep. That's what makes this, that's what makes this. That's what makes this world go around, you know that, yeah.
Is this, I just have a question on this picture right here. There's this little white, this one right here, is that a future house, or you can't build there, or what's, what is this, right here?
The one that just got built.
What's this one?
Kind of ghosted, you know, man.
You mean this?
This little thing right here?
Oh, right there?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's built.
That's built?
Yeah, that, those pictures, they don't show.
Okay.
Yeah, that's how they're built.
Okay, thank you.
What were you just asking about, right here?
I didn't know if that was the future.
Here's the updated aerial from just last year.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I just didn't know if that was right there.
Okay.
Well, here's the motion we have in front of us, is to require Dan to submit a plans for the completion of Daniel Lane Northeast, enter into a development agreement, and then to allow him the building permit to be issued, so he can start building. Anybody like that motion, or want to change that motion, or make that motion?
John, can you just quickly, can you tell us the disadvantages of, just so everyone knows of the add the fifty feet at a time?
First is cold joints. So, the more cold joints we put into the tubinous pavement or concrete pavement, the more problems we have in the future. It's just where we see shifting, even if we do, um, put in rebar or tie things together in concrete, they tend to shift there sometimes. When it comes to the tubinous, we don't have consistent pavement, um, more cold joints in the tubinous pavement, again, shifting. We don't, won't get proper over that from the air or gets things like that. So, to minimize, we allow starts and stops that we have in construction, it's the best product we're gonna get. There goes, yeah, you can think of just putting fifty feet of water main in, digging down in that patch, how do you get a proper action in with the road there? Things like that, you're limited construction, you don't have full operation of your equipment.
So, just to make sure that I have the recommendation, and I'm sorry to keep bringing it up, but I still want to make a screwed up motion if I make one, but, get the plan together, if he gets the plan together, and then he gets the building permit approved, start building the four-plex. Even though the road, if the road is not completed, he still can get the occupancy on two of them.
Correct.
Two of the four. And then the other two wouldn't be approved until the road came in though, but at least we get some money back, okay? Those two will come on on the street, it's already there. Right, that's what I, that's how I'm getting in here too, so.
Yeah, and a part of what Cheryl wrote in there is the development agreement is, would be in place for it all to happen, which would include the fees to complete that development.
I can imagine that being quite the head.
Alright, we're looking for a motion.
I'm, I'm gonna go with that recommendation on that. I realize it's gonna cost him a little more money, but I feel like there's been some sort of, at least, uh, negotiation going on, and trying to meet in the middle. I do think in the long run, it's gonna be better for the neighborhood to have the road all completed at one time. I think ultimately, that'll be better for him, although I realize I ain't gonna help you right now, and that sucks, and I'm sorry I'm making that motion, but that's the way I feel on this, so that's the motion I'm gonna make.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate the consideration, listening to, uh, you know, what my concerns were.
Well, I think they're valid, I, I totally get that.
Sure, no, I understand.
No, I'm guessing that my next round of golf's gonna cost double.
No, no, I don't know. But I do appreciate, you know, the fact that you're on the table, that really gave it a good discussion, and you just slammed the hammer. And, uh, so, you know, we'll, we'll be able to sell two units, and, and we'll work with that, and we'll make the best out of it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You bet.
Next one, under motions in general business, lot split. Radcliffe Homes has applied for a lot split for lots one and two, block two, Peterson Six subdivision. A new survey showing parcels A and B is attached. On the survey, the owner of the parcel A is asked at the lot line, we move to reflect what they always thought was the property line by where the sod was laid during the construction of the home. In retrospect, during the plating process, the property line should have been placed where we currently are proposing on the surveys, it makes more sense. The planning commission held a public hearing on August fourth, and now recommending approval of the lot split. Okay, Josh, once again, what do you have to say at the?
Yeah, I think if you look at the, at the photo, you can see where the grass is, is plant, is planted there, so it's pretty obvious, they just missed the angle on it, and put it in the wrong spot of that property line, so. We recommended approving it.
So, we'd be moving it from where it's, where the white line is up here now, over to where the grass is.
The sod.
Yeah.
Which actually does make, look like it makes way more sense.
Meets up with that, that other corner, no?
Right. And I don't think anyone is, I think they're starting to build on this empty lot.
I was out there today, there's a, there's a house going up on it right now, so I talked to the owner of, uh, parcel A a little bit.
Aren't you guys all just busy people, or whatever? I got called in at three in the morning. So, we're looking for approval of lot split as requested, anyone wanna make that motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Make a motion, a second, any other questions, or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, that also carries. That will take us to the next one, was Bucknell Labor Regional Pond, approving plans and specs. SEH has prepared the plans and specs for the Bucknell Labor Regional Pond project. The plans include a portion of the current pond upgrade, and this portion of the new pond for the extra capacity that will be needed to serve a subdivision, which Bucknell will be responsible for the cost of. The city has taken this opportunity to work with Bucknell and Rick Labor to mitigate drainage through the labor property from earlier developments in the southeast portion of town. Labor has agreed to deal, to deed over land that will allow for increasing the size of the Bucknell Pond and create a regional pond. The city's cost of the portion of this project is estimated to be a hundred ninety-three thousand, four hundred eighty-one dollars and fifty cents. Staff is recommending approval of the project, and to use money set aside in the stormwater fund. With approved, Colts will be bought to council at the August twenty-fifth meeting for approval. And, council action requested then will be to approve resolution twenty twenty dash, a resolution approving the plans and specs to seek two Colts for the project, as per Minnesota statutes, the city's statute for purchasing policy. Questions and discussion? If we approve this, are we gonna try and start it this fall yet, or? Is it, uh, Jen still there? Meets all the, satisfies all of our?
Yep, it would, it would make it so the whole Bucknell area satisfies requirements, and then it actually would satisfy the requirements for the majority that comes to this location, um, that was previously developed before the rules were put in place, so.
And Bill, we think it's gonna help mitigate some of Mr. Labor's problems over there and stuff too?
Yep, um, it makes it look like it's immediate help to him, but the bigger help is to the whole bird subdivision.
Yep.
And he's cooperating by, um, allowing us to take some of his property as part of this process, so.
So, is there any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'm looking for a motion.
Hey, that's a donation, when I say taking, that's a donation I can add to the city. We've dealt with others, and.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second, all in favor, say aye to approve?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, that carries. That will take us to, item number thirty-one. You read that one already? VFW Memorial Project. VFW Project, City Participation Water and Sewer. As you know, the city's been working closely with the VFW on their Veterans Memorial Park. Once the project is completed, we donate to the city as part of our park system, and something the city will be very, very proud of. The plan has been for restrooms with holding tank and no water. It's staff's recommendation that we partner with the VFW during the construction phase, and upgrade their plans to a full restroom concept that would include sewer and water. Hale will work on Colts for the upgrade to the restroom. Permission is requested to extend our water sewer service lines from Second Avenue Southwest to the VFW property. This is a project that our Public Works Department will do in-house, and the cost coming from Water Sewer Enterprise Funds. So, the council action requested tonight would be approve the extension of the water sewer line services to VFW property for the future restroom project. Now, should that also include?
No, we'll bring the quotes back to you on the restroom.
So, the restroom's gonna be a different night, a different project? Okay.
Well, I'm all for sewer and water working to take everything away, so I'm gonna vote, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve this.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the sewer water lines, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, that carries. Now, I believe on the restroom part, when we get to it, just to give them all a heads up, isn't that gonna be, they've got an estimate of around eighteen thousand for what they originally thought, we're gonna look and see what the difference would be, and possibly do the difference from what you.
Yeah, they were originally looking at more of a remote type restroom station, and what we'd prefer, since it'll become part of the park system, is what we've now done in Rind Park, Meadow Park, and out by the SYA building, a very similar type restroom to that, that's basically fully plumb. And so, their budgeting for the wallet, we thought maybe, since we would see a bigger benefit long-term for the improved restroom, if maybe we could help out with whatever that dis, uh, difference is that should.
In two thousand thirteen, the bathrooms that we put up, uh, were thirty-five and thirty-eight thousand, uh, each one, one was a little bit cheaper.
That's what I thought, that the SYA one, the one at Eric Cave, I thought it was like thirty, thirty-five or forty dollars.
Thirty-eight.
Yeah.
So, we can be looking at the difference.
Twenty thousand dollars, but that was two thousand thirteen, obviously have inflation, prices have gone up, so.
Can you use some of that CARES Act money for that and stuff too, or not?
No.
No?
I don't wanna be talking, no.
You can, apparently, if you're making a touchless sink, you're touching.
Yeah, maybe the fixtures.
That's alright.
Yeah, that's what you can, you gotta spend it fast.
Alright, well, we can look at approving that at the next meeting, so.
Yeah, and if there's a consensus, that'll help us keep going with.
Well, we wanna look at, we wanna find out what the estimates are and stuff. Because I know, I know you want a little bit of an upgrade for the, a little bit of a storage area in the back, and where you can do water shut-off.
Well, that would be, that's all part of our plans.
That's what I think.
With the existing.
I'm surprised there's not, no, uh, construction companies that would be willing to do something in kind, or.
We may find, we may, Sean may find some.
They're getting, already, the concrete work you've seen already is, from what I've heard, a donated, uh, feature of construction already.
Lever portion, yeah.
But, we'll discuss that at the next one, what we just passed, we did get, I did get the vote, didn't we? Yep, alright, so, that passes. Guess what, now we have CARES Act. Resolution approving CARES Act, allocation for departments. The city received four hundred sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred ninety-seven dollars of the Corona Relief Fund dollars to help offset the impact from the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Reimbursable expenses must be incurred from March one, twenty twenty, to November fifteenth, twenty twenty. All expenses must satisfy three elements, necessary due to, on account of expenses incurred during covered period incurred expenses. These funds will be used to upgrade bathrooms at all sites that have a minimal or touch-free environment. Business supplemental grant through the EDA, cameras and video equipment for virtual meetings, cleaning grant, EDA drinking fountains, fire hall, decontamination area, hand sanitation stations, public works tools, touch-free doors, supplies, and other items that are qualified expenditures to help stop the spread of this disease. So, it shows the percentages broke down there for you to each part. Council action requested would be to approve or deny the allocated use of funds for qualifying CRF funds.
So, I don't know all the rhyme or reason behind this, I'm guessing Carl's mathematical brain figured it out, because it's broken down nicely. My concern, which isn't a huge concern, but, man, it'd be great to spend seventy grand here, and seventy grand at the library, and Public Works, and everywhere, and other places might need it more dearly. I look at this, and I see the money coming in, and I realize that as a government, we, we got hit. Um, but if seventy-seven percent of the money is sticking with us, and only twenty-three in grants out to the rest of the community, I guess I would, I would prefer seeing more money going out to the community, not tons, but even if we could tweak it somehow, and get it up to thirty percent of the money, um, or something like that, or, you know, well, I guess you got EDA on there, so thirty, I'd like to see that we could somehow get more money in the grant stuff.
Well, the other thing to consider is, it is the grants that are in there, but anything that we do within the library, um, City Hall, the Civic Center, and all of that, those things are going, going to come back to the community for the touchless environments, it's going to keep us safe, you know, like for the Civic Center to be able to be open and have those things available as well.
I get the Civic Center part, I don't know how many people are gonna come in here and go downstairs and use the bathroom, and be glad that they didn't have to turn the water up.
Right.
I think it's necessary for employees, I'll go with that.
Right.
I, I really actually think if you wash your freaking hands, whether you touch it or not, you're gonna be fine. And that's why you got hand sanitizer, and that's a whole other argument, but, uh, that's just my two cents on it, when I read it over, that's the feeling I got, um, it, that's just where it's at. It doesn't mean it's good, or, I know we're, it's all going to good stuff, because it has to, but.
Well, let me ask you this question, a follow-up on Craig's, if you designate it to that department, if you need another five thousand here, say, from the City Hall to the Fire Hall or something, can you remove your, once, once you've designated, it's stuck there?
Absolutely. We, the, they just, the League of Minnesota Cities recommended that we do this, so that we have something in place, so that come audit time. But there's not, nothing saying that exactly this amount needs to go there, this just gives us a good idea, things are then, it kind of covers our behinds to go forward with it. But if we, we, here at City Hall go, we need twenty thousand, the, the other fifty, we want, it can go to the Fire Department, we, they really have all these other needs that we don't have, or we need it to go to the Civic Center, or to the library, or just some other public place.
Or, as Craig said, we can send it to the EDA to send out to the business community if we need it.
Absolutely.
But there is a short timeline, this money has to be spent before November fifteenth, so.
Well, I understand that.
Well, that's why.
If we're gonna give you more, we need, those businesses have to, have time to prepare too.
Well, we're hoping for like around two, at some point, where we can maybe direct word to community as well, right? Are they thinking about maybe getting more money out again, or is that not in the works?
I don't think any more money out on this, but the thing is, with the EDA grants, I can tell you that the EDA is already working on it, they're meeting next week, they already have, in preparation of us having, getting this approved, they're gonna get their stuff approved for their grant program that they're trying to do, so.
But even, so, I guess the question is, Carol, even if it didn't get all, if we don't get enough, we're gonna have a, probably a different timeline in November on the EDA grants, I believe, aren't we?
No.
We're gonna try to run it around the end, we should probably shorten it up, so, so if we didn't know that was gonna be gone, we could move that money back somewhere else, if they need.
So, if we don't use this money, we have to give it back.
No, I understand that, but what I'm saying is.
It has to be.
If we didn't, if, that's an EDA discussion to have, I realize that, but.
Use this as a quick way to give your money, is to give it away.
If we use the shorter timeline on our grant applications, we'd know before the November deadline, if we could move it somewhere else.
Yep, and that's what Joy has planned, yes, and that's exactly what Joy has planned, either that, or, or she's got, I think, the set amount that she was talking about was like twenty-five hundred dollars, and she said, so what they could do is, they got that timeline in there, but if there's still money left over, she could open it up, and maybe for another week, and say, okay, if you have more expenses, we could give you twenty-five hundred more.
Alright, just so we know, we can kind of shuffle stuff away after this.
Yeah.
Is that's kind of what you were aware of?
And she, yeah, I just, yeah, I mean, I, I look at this, and I understand it's gotta be, it's kind of quick, so it makes sense that we upgraded everything around here, and I, I'm just in my head, I'm not a plumber, obviously, I know that stuff's expensive, but I would think that we could get everything up to code, and, and reimburse for the plexiglass and things like that in here, for like fifty grand. And then that gives you twenty more grand that we could throw out into the EDA grant.
Yep, yep.
And I would like to make sure, I just wanna make sure that the people, they're, they're facing the same costs that we are, so I wanna make sure that we're, as an EDA, that we're able to have, uh, money to actually help them, rather than just maybe just a little teeny bit, so. That, it's, I'm okay with this, I just wanted to give my.
Think on EDA, we could include farmers, we're like two miles in time.
Sure.
Yeah, we can definitely reallocate funds if we have, if we think we need to do that, absolutely.
So, this is just a base plan, so we got something.
Yeah.
Sure, we're going for it, alright, I, I can live with that.
Alright, any other questions or discussion? And then the action would be to approve or deny the allocated use of funds for qualifying CRF funds.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Do we have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next up here is library page position. Alyssa Jones, in August, we'll be losing both our library pages, as well as our intern to college. We received a number of quality applicants, and conducted phone and in-person interviews with a number of candidates. While illness and summer travel prevented us being with two additional finalists, I would like to offer one of our vacancies to Alyssa Jones. Alyssa's an excellent student, and we're with long, strong circle ties. She will make a great fit on our team. We hope to finish interviewing page candidates next week, and have another library page to bring before the council by the end of August. So, the council action requested would be to approve or deny Alyssa Jones to be hired to position a page.
I'll move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Starting win?
Sure.
Right-of-way?
Um.
End of August.
I'm extra. I think probably right-of-way.
Okay, this one. Alright, we got a motion and a second, any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, that carries.
Can you wait to go on to the next one?
Yep, yep. We gonna have them up front, or are we gonna put them?
No, I'm holding on here.
Debbie's setting, is it all done for anything, babe? Probably starting for me to go pick her up, knock her off, because she's just playing games today.
Who's the guy, who's the guy that's gambling, should I use the guy with the next guy?
Alright, I'm scared, boys, we won't record it, guys.
Homes Land Works Jail, the first one. West Development, now we got the land owners at some.
I'm, uh, all the way down by the wall, hold on.
Where, where is it on this map? Will this be your place?
Alright, we got a favor to need. West Development feasibility study, SEH has prepared the feasibility study for the West Development, they will be presenting it for formal adoption. The next step would be to prepare development agreements with the property owners, and to set the terms of the sack-wack fees, along with any term limits. So, SEH's, you show us yours now. We're gonna have problems again. With the computer again.
Alright, can everybody see that okay?
Yep.
Can you hear it all, or is it? Okay, alright. Well, so, we took a look at this property here in northwest, uh, if you can see the outline right there in red, um, I ninety marks the, I don't know, I guess, the, 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 the west boundary. South is sort of where the sewer shed would, would form from that area, and then north-south, the areas, uh, so this is sort of the existing conditions of what we, what we started with. Um, the areas in, kinda like purple are, the areas that are, um, currently proposed to be developed. You got the one-acre lots right in the middle there, um, and then, uh, along the real line, road there is the new, where the new apartments are going in, right now, are in construction. And then along the real line road there is the new, where the new apartments are going in, right now are in construction. And then in the southern part is the Al Chia property. So we wanted to highlight those. We kind of, you know, obviously we're gonna work around those. And so we got about a total of, just about three hundred and five acres. And this plan also just shows there's some wetlands that are out there. Just based on the National Wetland Inventory, they're not, they're not lineage or anything, but, so there are some wetlands there. So we wanted to highlight that. And then all the other line with the contours. All right, so, so what I, what I kind of walked through is sort of just the process that we used to, just the process that we used to go about developing a plan. And so just kind of walking through the different layers that we looked at. This is the existing zoning. There is no real zoning on this property because it's outside, they're currently outside of state limits. But you can see there's R1 up in the north, and then Bearcave Park is a park, also space, and where the school is. And so, so that didn't really, that didn't really tell us a whole lot, I suppose. So then we looked at the land use, the future land use. And the upper part is kind of the R2, which is sort of a median to low density in the north. There's some R1 in the middle of the site, and then, and then R1, low-density residential in the southern part. And then the rest is industrial, M1. So, so we had some discussions about that, and I know you're gonna be updating your comprehensive plan soon, in a year or so. And so I think this was a good discussion to have about why, why was that industrial and should that be industrial? And the conclusion amongst the staff was that since there's really no access on 90 there, that this probably isn't the best spot, or other locations in the city that might be better for industrial, that this probably doesn't make sense for it to be industrial land use. Then we looked at access. And one of the, my access is, the county has access standards. Especially on the side where you ride through there, they're, you know, they're, they have certain spacings based on the type of street that it will be, whether it's urban, arterial, or rural and in them. Also, another key to the access is property ownership, because that's also how land develops, is by people who own property, and all parts of them have access. So this was just kind of a preliminary study of where, where access points would go, potentially where they could go. They like to be across from each other, they need to be further apart from each other. And so, looking at, just kind of taking it the next step is, at the whole, looking at the whole site and looking at access, of course, there's existing driveways as well, so those aren't the win-away. But as, as the property does develop, we'll need to work out with the county where, where they would allow the access. And I think as a community, you'd want as many accesses as possible. You know, it looks like this scale, it looks like they're real close together, but you know, those are, you know, quarter, quarter mile apart, some of those. So it's, it's, you gotta put it where it makes sense, that there's existing driveways, existing cuts there, they want to use those. So we just, again, studying where it made sense to take access. And again, there's no access opposite on I-90, so, and then also not only access to the site, but also off the site as well. All right, then open space was the other thing we looked at. I mentioned that big, large wetland, kind of dissecting through the middle. So, there's also a lot of, some drainage corridors through there. There's some steep slopes along those areas. So we just wanted to identify those as a part of the planning process, where those fit. And those are likely they're not to be developed, so how can they be utilized as open space? And maybe, how can those open spaces be connected, you know? So, so if you were to have, the next step, looking at open spaces as well, how can these open spaces connect? And I'm thinking connections for walking, or biking, or trails, or things like that, you know? To create, you know, again, it could be that it's in the backyard places. And so, this just kind of looks at, looks at it holistically. How does, how do these open spaces relate to other open spaces in that whole area? How can it be connected? Then, then we looked at, again, if you look at the access points, you figure out, well, where the streets could go. And you said to look at streets, actually, you kind of want to look at, you want to look at homes too. Where would be the home, what would be the best spot for homes, or townhomes, or whatever? And then, so, again, you want to probably put it up against those corridors, because people like to have access to open space and have that in their backyard, or, or how would it work? And so, so you lay out the homes, and you kind of lay out a network of streets. And one of the last things we looked at was parks. So, so there's a huge, obviously, Bearcave Park, huge regional park. And, you know, ideally you want to have, everybody have a ten-minute walk to a park or open space. And the smaller circle shows a five-minute walk, and then the larger circle shows a ten-minute walk. So you're pretty, you know, for the most part, you're covered, you know, for your parks. And I think, so we identified some areas outside that ten-minute walk, and those are associated with those natural resources as well. Some of the wetlands, and they're adjacent to some of those, or there's steep slopes, or there's, there are, you know, just, any, there are some, you know, trees and range right in through, right in through here. There's kind of some nice grove of trees and some steep slopes. So, there's, there's maybe a small pocket-type park, habitat, or, or playground or something. So that was the next step. And then finally, so finally, we, we looked at, we kind of put it all together. And this isn't very clear, but I'm gonna try to kind of explain what the different, you know, these are different land uses. So, there's a road layout, and then there's, there's lots, but it's meant to have flexibility, you know, because, you know, because, again, this is just sort of a moment in time. And so we wanted to offer some flexibility. The road layout, I think, is pretty solid, but you can also change the width of the lots. Some of the depths are pretty standard, but, so we used a mix of one-acre lots. So the areas in blue would be one-acre lots. And we did the, you know, that was one of the original proposals, we kind of kept that in there. And then we also did half-acre lots, which is more of a, kind of more of a tan color there, there's hard to see that. And those are one hundred and twenty feet wide by one eighty foot, still a pretty healthy-sized lot. Third-acre lots, ninety by one sixty, which is more typical for store build, ground-in that, ground-in range. And those would be some of the, that's more of the yellowish ones right there, that are kind of backed up to corridor. And then, thinking about affordability and other, other smaller lots, you know, maybe seventy, seventy-five feet wide for some more modest-type homes. And so we have some of those sprinkled in there, and then also townhomes and villas. So villas are just sort of compact, large homes on small lots, and townhomes, we know what those are. So, we're trying to create the transition, townhomes would be transitioned from the multifamily, so you have a transition from higher density to medium density. And so, and then we had, and then there's open space, which is the green. So, so that's, that's kind of a summary of how we went about this. I thought it'd be better to show you how we went about the process than to just, than to just put that plan up there, you know? And it's more about how did we get there? And I know the reason why we're doing this is to look at the, look at the utilities. And I know there's a lot of development pressure in that area. And we want to, the city want to be proactive and look at, well, how can this develop? And then what are the means for the cost to run the, run the utilities out there? And so developers, developers will have better on hand with the cost of development would be. So, with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Jenna. Unless you have any questions about kind of through that process, but.
I hope we got any questions? All right.
All right, thank you.
All right, so then. Really what sparked this was the utilities. And to get to the Legends 20 area, right here in the center, and also down south here, Al Chia property, those are the first developers who wanted to go ahead. How do we get utilities from where we ended, in Bearcave Park? Which is actually, you know, 11th actually runs here, right now. And we do need to reroute it in the future, per the county. And so we have looked at realizing, and we have done some last walk to, to get the park land dedication corrected for that. And so there is a manhole that is out on the side of the road, the ground road right now, which is the sanitary sewer that can serve this entire West Development area. We also have water main, just at 11th, out on the street, so right off the county road. There are a few natural obstructions, so there is a drainage way that comes down through here. And then other people's property that these developers are looking at. Well, how do we get these utilities across that area? And at what expense if we're way over, way over here? You know, should they be putting in the utility extensions that other people can utilize, then at their expense? Versus, could that be a city cost? Or a city project that then gets reimbursed? So what we looked at once Andy got through the layout and everything, is we started putting in the utilities. And where did the trunk mains need to go for sanitary sewer, and also for the water mains? And really looked into those areas that are going through non-developable areas. You know, and how to get service with the sanitary sewer. We want to run along this low area so that we can keep gravity sewer to everyone and utilize cheap pumping, which is gravity flow, versus paying for the stations and maintenance and everything else. So, really looked at it that the lines that are actually in color are the lines that are, would go out there for the improvement of the entire West Development. So, then we took an estimated cost to put in those lines. And this whole thing doesn't have to be done at the same time. But for everybody and to figure out how to get reimbursed for the cost of these stubs that would be placed in by the city. Really broke that down for acreage, non-developable acres out there to create a new wagon sack for this area. So our current wagon sack, it's two thousand for sewer per acre and two thousand for water per acre. And what we estimate, our estimate breaks down to be is, if the city is agreeable to put in these parts of the products, these trunk mains and water mains when they are needed, that the developed acre would pay an additional wagon sack total of fifty-six hundred dollars per acre on top of that four thousand. So nearing ten thousand dollars per acre for water and sewer, for all of the property, the West Development. So. Now, if you take that in comparison, that's a lot of money from where we started, where we were at. Nearly four thousand per acre to nearly ten thousand per acre for water and sewer. That's to reimburse the city in the cost of making these extensions, to pay ourselves back for those, for, to all the properties that benefit from those mains. If you, Stewartville registered two different cities, but if you want to throw into comparison what Rochester is doing, they've recently put into plan a new sack for the entire city. And it's a different sack for different regions. The least expensive one is eight thousand for sewer alone. The most expensive is nearing forty thousand per acre for sewer alone. So, Stewartville, that's different. But I just want to use some comparison of what's going on in the area and how cities are relooking at different areas to get utilities and be able to service these extensions. So, that amount of money could be paid for by the city at a certain proportion if the council sees it to be a good investment for the city. But what I really looked at was, how do we put the project in and get reimbursed? Or what is being installed for that area townhouse? Any questions?
Would this be our new wagon sack for the entire city, or is this just for the West Development?
Just for the West Development. So the normal two thousand wagon sack would stay for the entire city. For this alone, where the city is putting in investment to extend these trunk mains, this would be an additional wagon sack for this part of the city.
Wait, yeah, go ahead.
You refer to city or roster, but that's, like you say, it's not a comparison. So what is like Byron, or Yoda, or Pan, or something that's kind of like, you know, close that would compare to Stewartville? What's our wagon sack fees?
I haven't looked into.
Our finance committee, we did that study, what, two years ago? Do you remember? We were kind of in line with it, with what everybody else was doing. Do you remember, Frank?
I can't remember what the numbers were.
Because we did look at.
I know we were a little less, but maybe it wasn't.
Yeah, because we looked at, was that the time to increase? And you had decided it wasn't, because we were either less, or about to see?
We're about to see.
Rochester's are going up because a lot of theirs are undersized mains, so they have to go back and redo a lot of the old mains that's in there because it's undersized. So that's why theirs are increased so much.
Yep, so theirs has the cost to redo a lot of mains that were the undersized if new development was put on, plus the cost to extend the mains to where it needs to go.
Did we, Jen, did we ask you, or did we look at, make it like a hybrid, where this would be the four thousand, but there'd be an assessment cost per lot for the other, basically five thousand or whatever it is? Didn't we look at something like that?
Where'd be?
Instead of coughing up the nine thousand acre rate up front, I thought.
I think we talked about that.
Yeah, I thought we talked about something on that too.
Didn't we talk about the four thousand up front and assessable?
So, and that is up to the council of how they'd want to put it on there. It could be four thousand up front for developers' costs. And then when the property is sold, you have an assessment.
Well, what, a connection fee or something, or what was it?
So, we usually take care of all of it though, at development, with the wagon sack and development costs. So. And part of that would be broken down. A lot of cities, their connection fees are a set fee per lot, per connection. Whereas we figured this out by acre, and obviously that changes by how many lots are out there. What type, what size lots actually gets built to get that figure, figure it out.
Okay, I asked Jen, and now I'm gonna ask developers. What do you think of that nine thousand? What's that? You're the ones that are gonna be paying.
It's a little bit of a game changer, I would say, you know, it's more than double of what we were anticipating, so.
What I'm asking, I guess, is a big enough game changer that would. What I'm asking, I guess, is a big enough game changer that would, uh, know the development, you'd say, no, no, we can't do it, it's too much. I mean, we're not trying to find a magic number, but we're trying to make this work for everybody too.
I, I, so here's, here's just my personal thought about Stewartville as a whole. Stewartville needs something a little bit better than what we have. And I, I think, I think Stewartville's working on a path that I just, I, I see the trailer park expansion, small homes on small lots, even other nice, you know, Mark's got some very nice houses, stuff like that. But there's nothing with any size that's going to draw money, people in to this community.
I think there's a lot of people that live in southwest Rochester right now that would prefer to live down here if they could get a house on a bigger lot. A half bigger lot, a one acre lot. I mean, that's why I realize this is expensive and it's kind of a hard pill to swallow, but I feel like that's what we need to do.
That's why they moved from here to there.
Exactly.
You know? Right, that's why we, so unless you do something to bring it back, and I understand that you have to pay for this, I, I get it. But additional cost to bring that in isn't, I mean, we'd be better off to just go up there, third lots. Because it's by the acre. Won't we get off to a third lots and just smother it with a bunch of small homes again?
Well, you're paying the same whether you put 10 houses on an acre or one house on an acre. It's by the acre.
I mean, it's by the acre.
I mean, you know, that'd be nice too because then your name could be more one than ours by putting in this. Yeah, that's Wayne Gunderson, G U N D E R. Yeah, so here's what we need to do. I think everybody's in agreement. Obviously you guys have vested interests because you guys are going to be the ones making money off this. We as a city, I think, need it because I think our city's ready for it and we need to have more to offer. And I, I've always thought since I've been on the board that we gotta come up with something. I mean, you just can't, we have all these startups and that's just not doing it. And, uh, I, I just don't know how to get, I mean, the city can't, I don't, I wouldn't feel that I was doing my job or that I was, I was being respectful of the entire city if we were to just say, oh, we'll swallow the cost taken out of whatever water contingency, the set or the other, just because we need it. But I also, I don't really agree with you guys taking it, you know, too. So I mean, I, the last time I know, we had a conversation about different ways that it could be paid off, which was beneficial to the developer because you wouldn't be paying it until a lot of the law was sold and it would allow you to have be a little more lucrative, but I don't remember what we had figured out.
Well, let's, we can do a little housekeeping here and get this resolution passed on this feasibility study and talk about the development agreement. After that, Rachel?
Yes, yeah.
Well, yeah, tonight we're just talking about moving forward with the feasibility for.
Right, accepting the feasibility study and then, but I think then you guys need to sit down and really look at how, put together a couple of options maybe, um, and then come back. But we want to do this in timely manner because, you know, Chiap does want to start moving forward.
Yep. And it's kind of already held up a year for this. You guys would like to move forward sooner than Wayne or else, right? If possible?
To move forward?
Yeah, I mean, if we could work something out that you guys would.
Cheryl.
As we were talking on the way over, I said, I was told about the city of that. We're not the only, we're not the only ones.
No, you know how I've already seen developers here because there's years that I've complained about developers. Pissed about this, pissed about that, not having the guts to go forward with that. So, you know, if he says we need this, we need that and nobody would come forward. And then that would piss me off. And now we actually got you guys coming forward. So now's the time we need to start talking and make something happen.
We, we got, we have some preliminary numbers, Bill, right? But we haven't really got, I mean, we're not really like down on the hard number yet either.
No, Cheryl put yours in here and said $198 an acre.
Just a second, folks, we're going to get this feasibility study out of the way first and we're going to continue this discussion here, correct?
You can, it, it doesn't matter which way you do it.
Oh, okay, it doesn't?
No.
We'll continue the discussion.
So on our, on our, on our part, I'm just looking at, you know, obviously we have to make money. If, if, if the land sits there and we have to pay your taxes, you know, I mean, if we can sell it all right away, which I've got a feeling that we got a lot of people looking. We're fine, but we got a whole lot of that sucker. We don't know, we don't know what, you know, the future brings. COVID really messed up a lot of things. Um, I'm not trying to talk negative, I'm just trying to be more realistic. I was surprised being in construction, especially developing construction, now that we're developed. I've heard every, every developer complain about how expensive it is. And when we ran the numbers and got down to it, I'm like, whoa. I'd be better off going and stocking market with some money than I would be to, to develop. And that's how tight it gets. So 6,000 additional dollars doesn't sound like much, but it is a big deal because it's a, it's a taxing.
Because it means that me buying that, I have to pay 10,000 more because you're going to make your money one way or the other. It's just going to be hard.
But then you can't price, you can't overprice a lot.
No, I get that, but the reality for home buyers though, with that used to think they could come to Stewartville and buy a lot for $40,000. You gotta get a more realistic view. If I'm going to build, I mean, it's, I gotta be prepared to be hit with a big bill, this is what it is. And I, I blame Jennifer, the expenses, this is way more expensive than it should be.
You know, Jenna, there's, there's a double side of that Rochester thing. If they're going to charge that kind of money, they're not going to go, they're not going to. So then the people are going to, yes, yes, then people are going to start looking. So.
Well, so tonight's not the night we're going to hammer out a number.
No, tonight you're just accepting the feasibility study and then we need to sit down and put some options together.
I think that's awesome.
Developers are here, so being able to put something to the front of the, you know, the cap.
Well, at least we got numbers out there that people know what we're thinking about each way. But we need, you know, we gotta set something, I mean, this is awesome that you guys all came and violated the COVID rules.
Al, what do you got, Al?
Yeah, you know, we've been mentioning numbers now for over three years and, um, there's some blessings that, you know, I didn't jump on right away because other than the development. You know, when the 10,000 is thrown at us, that, that's a lot of money. And, you know, now you got to evaluate the lot value is going to be and, um, you know, where is that break in, breakpoint, you know, get, you know, the feasibility of doing it? Um, I'd like to ask you folks to look at the agenda proposed for all of it. Is there an option where you don't put it all in and then that number comes out?
So.
Because if, if that whole front of the stall is done with, um, Maryvale storage, if that's not needed for another 20 years because John's not going to develop, why put it in today and let it sit that long?
So the proposal isn't to put it all in today, but Al, it's not, it's not fair to you to put in a certain amount of it? And you pay for all of it at a certain size and then some of the else have to pay a different price? We were looking at to service the whole area, what in the future will be needed using today's construction dollars? And dividing that out by all of the developable acres. We put it in as it's needed, we don't put it all in now. Just as.
The cost is up, the total cost is up from.
The, so for your, what it would break down to, if you're the only one who goes in and develops right now, that cost is pretty much going to cover what was put in for you.
Yep.
Um, but now if Gunderson's developed theirs, we obviously need to work with Mark and go up through his property. We're going to be putting a lot more pipe that makes sense Mark will pay for. Someday in the future when he develops, the city will ride that cost and Gunderson will pay for their portion on it. Um, and, but it all gets divided out by everyone that's serviceable in this area in the future. So, yeah, some of this might be 20, 30 years down the line if people don't develop before the city gets reimbursed.
And if I remember right, that's developer acres.
Developable acres.
Okay. So now what land is still going to add to that area?
Yeah.
Bill, can you, do you know in the past, has the city helped out, uh, with wagon sack costs to get a development going?
Uh, the biggest project we undertook was to get the Schuman Business Park. The city did get a main put in there and then there was a combination of if there was immediate benefit to somebody, some of those costs started getting reimbursed and then there was deferred assessments. And then as the development became available or became usable, then those costs started getting reimbursed. And that was probably the biggest thing. You all, or the city has that experience, but maybe helping out with oversizing. And then the first option you threw out is there a way to finance this remaining 5,600? I think the developers have to understand the 4,000 is going to be there no matter what happens. And now, what options do we come up with for that remaining 5,600? Is it a fully reimbursable thing? Will we give them time to do that? Or is maybe there are some common areas that you as a council would say, you know what? It makes sense for us to show some incentive to pay for that. Then does that 98 or 5,600 drop down to 51 or 47 or something like that? Which that automatically makes it more valuable.
So, so can we take that money from the water and sewer funds or where's that money available at that we could put that pipe in or help, help put, put the pipe in?
Yeah, these are straight enterprise fund projects. So we do spirals or loans, uh, from those, those funds and then those funds get reimbursed once the development takes place or once the assessments, uh, get put into place.
So just being an enterprise project, it's, the property taxes doesn't really offset it then?
No.
Not now.
No.
It'd come from the water and sewer fund. Right.
Yeah, and with the exception of that, the big main that went out to Schuman Business Park. Most of our developments automatically hooked on to an existing one, so we've never really had to deal with common areas. In this project, since it's a whole new, not even in the city yet, we've got roads to cross or sections to cross. And it would be those areas that you would maybe consider helping out as a city incentive to spur on all of it. And then that automatically helps buy down that 5,600 for all the developers, so. And that probably gets at what Craig was mentioning, that hey, there is probably a category the city could delve into as we want to grow in all directions.
So, um, I don't know if you guys can answer this or are willing. So, it's 4,000 for a current wagon sack plus the 5, 6,000. What would be a number that you'd like the city to try to help with?
10,000.
They have the 4,000 no matter.
Yeah, they have, if you guys have the 4,000 no matter what, I mean, I mean, is 2,000 an acre? Is that more to swallow? Did that city pick that up or is, uh, do you have any?
Anything going to help obviously is the bottom line, so it's hard to say.
And I guess that's more of a city.
Some, uh, but I, some cities, um, will chip in for say the river crossing or a jack of moor under a highway or something that's unusual. And then they do second life for the rest, but the, the city picks up something unusual like that. As a way of kind of helping that down because that serves an, an, an area or in case of water main looping, that, that fits everybody, things like that. So there's different ways you can kind of justify it.
Are we going down to Coney right away with the water line?
And we also know that to cross the county road, we can't bore it.
We can't bore it?
No, it was proposed when we were trying to bring service out to the, um, to Maryvale School to bore it. And they ran into too much rock, so it had to be a little bit cut.
Do you know what the, you could figure out the number to run the water line down the county right away and to do the cut across the road for the sewer?
Yeah, we can figure out the cost, like Stewartville come up and cross the county road, cross that drainage way and then go down the right way.
Because we are talking, like Bill said, it is an unusual circumstance there to get it to them in a way. I mean, we gotta get it, they gotta get it somehow, but I don't know how much of an impact that would have on the wagon sack.
Okay, look at that and also double check like what Chatfield and Pyren and just the area we're charging in currently to get an idea and then try to get together here in the very near future and get something figured out.
Why, Jen, I guess I, I just got to ask you, why did we decide to change the number on the wagon sack for the West Development? I mean, why, why do we go to basically 10,000 compared to 4,000 or else?
Why? That is, so we were only looking at those common places, the places that go under a river or, um, the portion that goes up along the wetlands or the drainage that, and really no one's developing on. It is just a trunk main, but that's the way it needs to go through the land to be most cost effective to be able to service everybody through, um, with the gravity flow. Yeah, if.
But I guess my question is, I haven't got a problem with picking up the odds and end or the odd stuff like that. But on normal developments, don't we make the developer pay to get the sewer line there anyhow?
On all developments, we make the developer pay to get the sewer line, sewer line there or the water line there, but it's usually right there.
But, yeah, I know, but are, so are we saying we're raising the wagon sack because we're going to?
So we're saying we're raising the wagon sack to paper all these trunk mains that don't directly service on developers.
And, and if somebody comes in and wants to do a development northeast to southeast and it, and it has features like this where there's going to be an expense upfront, you should probably look at that area and say, this area needs a certain second life. And that, that's, you know, kind of balances out, but it's got to be a big enough area that it makes sense.
Right.
You know?
And I understand what you're saying, Jen, usually the sewer water's there. But normally, on most of these developments, the developer has to push it through to his other side anyhow.
They have to put it through to their other side, yeah, but so if you look at where we stop right now with the sewer, which is right here.
Yep.
We own this one.
Yep.
So don't we have to push it through?
To Al's.
To Al's.
But the Al's got to take it to the road and we take it under the road and Wayne's got to figure out how to get it to him. Does that change the wagon sack is what I'm saying, does that lower it back down?
So, you know, to bring it, to bring it to Wayne, he would probably take the path of, you know, the shortest path.
Correct.
Well, that doesn't help everybody in the future and now we have a sewer system that doesn't quite work right and doesn't work for future development. So the way this is showing things is it's, it's setting us up for the future. For Wayne to have to put all of that sewer in would be astronomically out. But it's in the best interest of the future of the city to get it where it needs to be.
So if it's in the best interest of the city, clearly it would benefit them as well as us. We should be picking up some more of the fees probably on our own to get the water, to get it all closer there so that it's more in line with someone that would be developing in town.
Yeah, and so what I did, I put together what the cost would be to put it all in and then to spread it out over everyone because there isn't necessarily a fund just to extend trunk mains. There, we have our sanitary sewer fund, but that's for maintaining and keeping the entire system going, including the wastewater treatment plant. So it hasn't been developed into our fees or anything. And therefore, put it onto the wagon sack like many cities do. Um, when you come into a different area that needs a special extension, for example, Oatana when Cabela's went in, there was a special wagon sack for that because they had to put in a large trunk main to get all the way out there. Now, did the city participate in? Probably, but I don't remember. But I guess I was leaving it up to you guys on how much does the city participate?
Well, I understand that, I'm just trying to find a creative way to make it feasible for everybody because I don't know if I wanna say that I wanna totally subsidize these guys on the back of every taxpayer in this town.
Correct.
Either.
And so what was proposed, all the taxpayers in the town aren't paying anything for it to happen. They're funding it to begin with, but they get paid back. But the council could also look at it as there's an investment into this town. And how much of an investment would they have to make?
Well, for the sake of the whole night, I think we need to move on. We obviously know where we need to get creative and we gotta come up with something. So, but I, I don't see, I don't know that I even agree that we have to have all hundred percent of it payed back to us. Maybe it's a smaller number because I could argue that if it were to go the way we like it, then I mean, our tax value, the overall tax value of the city should go up quite a bit.
Well, I agree with Craig. Part, but part of it's gonna be development agreements, if there is an agreement that this land will get developed and we're gonna put this down.
True, true.
You know, we gotta, we gotta look out for that too. And you're talking to some landlords that may not wanna develop too, so now you're still gonna have to cover the trunk line for three out of six or, you know. So I mean, I, I agree, it's gotta happen, I, I see it's gotta happen.
But we need some commitment too.
Totally agree, that's what I'm saying, everything I'm saying is trying to meet somewhere, you know. What'll happen is the person that waits twenty years, the whacking sack's gonna be fifty-eight grand per acre by then, so it'll make up for our, for our money now. Got a few ideas for you guys floating around up here?
And Mark had a good point last time was, you know, it's gonna be cheaper today than it will be, you know, in the future. I don't know, it all depends, like I said, right now it all depends, next year, it's, it's not looking real good out there for construction for next year. So, in saying that, next year, as of right now, um, working towards the fall, prices actually think are gonna go down. In my opinion, because people are gonna wanna secure work for the following year. But, I'm about to say it.
I worry about that some, I agree, I get what you're saying. But you could have lines that sit in there for years that doesn't get used.
No, because we, we only do them as it develops.
No, but he's talking to put them in now because of the costs, right? Because that's what you're saying right now?
Well, I think that's what like Mark, Mark...
Mark talked about it before and I get the point on that.
Yeah, I think Mark had a good point, I think he said that, so.
But, but then you have a line that could be sitting out there thirty years, it doesn't get used and it's not pulling poly into it and all that stuff to help with the longevity of it.
All right, now let's work on approving the feasibility study. We need a motion to approve resolution.
We had that, didn't I? I made a motion.
You made it, you seconded it?
Yep.
Imagine that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foes? All right, that carries.
I'm getting a CO2 headache, I might not be able to think here in a couple minutes.
All right.
So what's the...
These are not meant to be on a phase for two hours.
So Cheryl, what do you wanna do? You wanna have a special meeting with the, with the West Development?
I think you need to, you need to, um, give Bill and Carla some, and Jenna some time to put some figures together. Um, and then sit down with all you guys and come up with some options.
And have a special meeting with these guys?
Mm-hmm.
Sooner than later, right?
Yep.
The biggest help for us that we put together, I'll just say two or three options, is, is there a consensus to do some type of help off the fifty-six hundred or whatever that is, you know?
No.
Does that help us?
In my opinion, yeah, I think we need to help them because it's gonna benefit the city's future.
I mean, we'll always have out there, because that's just what it is today, the fifty-six could be assessed for over ten years. But if you wanna help offset that, then that helps us narrow down, um, some, uh, options that, you know, like common areas or, or, um, longer trunk areas.
We got a sudden meeting right now?
No.
All right.
You guys have any questions or comments or?
I have one question maybe. Just looking at this overall, it's not, you know, when we talk about trying to get this thing done. But, you know, we, we did put some numbers to a rural subdivision, so I had something to compare against with the whacking sack and some of the things.
Bill brought, good, you know, he goes, well, being that we're close to Stewartville, you know, if we put a rural subdivision in, he was gonna restrict us and tie us down to where we could never afford to put it in.
If it, if it came to that, does anybody know, have you guys dealt with that yet or would you restrict a rural subdivision out there?
We've never had to do it. We would probably want the roads and streets built as city spots because eventually we may annex it in. But we, we've never dealt with that, um...
When you say that, you mean, you know, block top section road, curving yard stones or?
Correct, with and stuff like that.
It probably size a lot, your lives are gonna be big enough, but if somebody wanted to come in and put smaller ones, we probably would have to look at that, but...
Is that, that also would make a difference, I think, in order to look at the money. That if we knew that we had those seven, you'd gonna say, yeah, we gotta put that in, yeah, we gotta put that, well, we can put that into the rural portion and say, okay, well, we gotta comp that out too, you know, or we gotta, let's, let's comp that out and look at it over here. We gotta, we gotta look at all our options.
Have you dealt with anything like that Jenna, in the New York cities?
It's kinda like you have to, you wanna get a commitment. Either, either it's going to go forward as residential urban or you kind of make a commitment that we'll let it go forward as township.
Okay, well, yeah.
Because you don't want to spot it in there, some of this, some of that, some of this, some of that. You would wanna make a commitment as a city and say, we aren't gonna take suburban out there because it's too much money. And then, then they're set, say, then we're gonna, then we go forward. Because a township isn't gonna wanna do that either if it's gonna be, you know, twenty acres of suburban and then twenty acres of urban. And then sewer's gotta go through and then you gotta argue about it.
Right.
That's why you have an order of the annexation agreement. But if you make a commitment that you're just gonna let it be township and then they could go forward and everybody could go forward thinking they're gonna do two acre lots.
So...
It's, it's almost that, we're at that point, we're kinda at the tipping point where decisions gotta be made.
I do foresee that being part of the city eventually, um, if we start looking at our sanitary sewer in Oatsville, we could gradually eliminate. So for serviceable area from our centers or without putting in lift stations and doing other expense, we need to develop in this area and that's what we'll use. So we can't go south much more without extra costs. And this could be comparable to, okay, let's extend that over and move all our station, we would have to be putting in to go further south, um, things like that. So just thought out there, but I do foresee this area to be part of the city in the future.
And that's how this all kinda started was with Wayne coming in and asking us and telling me what he wanted to do and, you know, I just thought, well, that's something we wanted to capture those taxes and to be a good part of the city, so let's sit down and, and that's how this all started. They didn't come and say, hey, what can you do for us? It was, we wanna do this and...
You guys did a northwest sewer study twenty years ago. So, you know, you've been, you know it's gonna happen or it's just that now you're at a point where, where the pressure is there to decide, you know? I think it's good to do.
Anybody got anything else to add?
No, I'm just gonna say that I appreciate your line as to what we can, we can, you know, work with us and, um, help it be something that's a little more interesting to us than it was a few weeks ago with that and we got with the sticker shaft. So I think we can all work together to make the sewer feel better, more opportunity.
If you wanna come in and meet, I guess I'll go, let's, let's do that sometime.
Well, we wanna see it happen, we just gotta figure out the most creative way to make it happen, hold on just a little bit. Which sounds like as much as all to look at, so that's a good thing.
You got, Al, are you on a time crunch on that with this? Is that what we said earlier or no?
Well, you know, kinda like Wayne says, the prices just keep going up every year, you said, so it's gonna be nice to keep going. But on hindsight, you know, like I said, I, I think Wayne helped me a little bit, so I don't know, you know, um, I got individuals that wanna build, but, you know, I keep pushing out, they might go find someplace else.
But the timing, the timing could work out where you could be starting next year?
It sounds like we're having to, we need to make a decision quickly so we can, if it goes off this manner and then you have a spring kind of word to be fair.
So as a, as a council, I think we have to meet sooner than later though.
Pretty sure we said that four times. I'm trying to be a jerk.
All right, we're gonna move on folks, so if you wanna leave us, but we're gonna do more presentations. You're not having any presentation?
No, no.
Thank you all for coming.
Thanks guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll take us the mayor's staff consulting reports, mayor's report tonight. We'd like to send our sympathies to the families of Sandy Jones, Larry Whitey, Carol Lynch, Thomas Campbell, Jim Glazin and Roger Jensen. Chamber of Commerce beholden to community mask drive at Fairway Foods on Thursday, August twentieth from five to seven. The chamber's asking residents to donate cloth masks, cloth for making masks or thread. If you wanna donate money, that's all right, the chamber will use that to purchase disposable masks for the community. Don't forget Trash and Treasure Days are September nineteenth. Sign up at Sturtefield Star now. And if you haven't heard or didn't read the star last week about our local Aaron Simmons, he will release his Third Street Southwest, it's an album that's a tribute to growing up in Sturtefield. Congratulations, Aaron. And we're gonna send out a special congratulations tonight to Jenna. She's been named an associate at SEH Incorporated. Well done Jenna, good job. Give her a big hand. That's all I got, Bill?
Uh, this time just reports in your pocket, nothing really to add. Um, we've already talked about the DFW part, uh, we put a pool update for you, um, on the, on your desk. And then, uh, we'll just tone in on some dates here and then some of these options, uh, to get back to you. And then we will need, either now or when you get to public works committee, uh, that group, we got a couple of updates Sean and I have for you guys that I'll tell them to look at for some projects.
Any questions for Bill? Move on, move on to finance, Carla?
Um, we are going to do the budget workshop for the council on August twenty-fifth at five-thirty. So we'll do it before the regular meeting and get through all of that. Um, if you have any ideas, directives, projects or anything like that, please either give me a call or email me. Otherwise, I can tell you that, um, right now, everything is, um, looking good. The preliminary budget needs to be to the county by the thirtieth of, uh, September. I have set the truth and taxation meeting for December eighth at six PM. And, um, that will actually get approved probably the first meeting in September. And right now, as of the preliminary tax base numbers, um, year to year, we've got a six percent increase. So, um, we are, things are looking good to be able to maintain everything currently that we have and, um, anything that's projected and stay within that so the city's portion of taxes will not go up.
All right, any questions for Carla?
I could hear her keep talking, but I couldn't tell where it was coming from.
You've got your wastewater report for July in there, city engineer, oops, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me.
Public works.
Public works.
No, it's okay, it's been a long meeting, so I got a report to go. I did read it already.
One question that we got for you. Aren't we irrigating out front this year?
It is, uh, because of the, uh, clover that's out there, he did spray. And the heat this time of year, trying to get rid of the clover, it probably, the grass will come back, it's just burning it a little bit now, so it isn't bad.
All right, any other questions for Sean? Keep up the good work. Wastewater report for July is in there, Jenna, you got anything else to report?
Um, the current SECP project is moving along. Seems like we don't get many comments from the public, so I take that as a...
That's a good sign usually.
Um, in regards to our next SECP project, I know this one's lasting another year. Do you wanna bring our guys' attention to the state aid funds? State aid funds have been brought to a level of red whereas you are not allowed to request more funds than you currently have allotted. And the significance of that is on previous state aid projects, we've been able to ask for our future funds for the next three years in order to fund a project. We will be in red for the rest of this year and all of the next year. There are more projects out there than there are unfor and that people, cities have requested more funds than the state even had as of March of this year and it's a first come, first served on those funds. With regards to that, our next project's supposed to be a state aid project. Um, and we would have wanted to use that same situation of borrowing ahead for that. With that information, I guess, I think we should be starting to look ahead at it sooner rather than later to plan appropriately of whether or not we have to push the further down the line or if it can actually happen, so. Sorry to be the bearer of bad news, but I think we need to be proactive at it.
Which means start plans for 2022 kind of at this time?
Which means we're gonna have to shuffle fit that and we're around and do some other...
We'll start some money for SEH.
I think, I think we should look at the feasibility of it and really look at the funding sources for it, um, a couple of years down. And if it's not there where, if we don't feel like we can do the project without that advancement, that we should be shuffling through and finding other projects.
Next meeting. Any other questions for our engineer? Thanks for all the work you did there. Library directors, no library, no fire chief, that takes this committee commission board reports, chamber of commerce has got the newsletter in there, the newsletter. We met over there today, Bill and I did, with Congressman Hagenhorn, was at the chamber office today, he was in town. Checking out, see how we were doing, a hundred days living through the coronavirus, but good conversation. EDA, HRA?
Meeting that's Tuesday.
Finance?
Nothing.
Library?
Nothing.
Park Board?
Uh, met on Monday, the hockey boards are here and, um, we talked about the girls' health project that already filled you in on that. And, um, and then the, the tennis court serves potential to be able to resurface and, and fix them up next, maybe next year, in the next couple of years, right?
But better reduce costs, Sean's been working on that, so.
We're looking at doing this stuff ourselves kind of, uh, instead of having a general contractor come in. It was a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and thirty thousand before, and then we get the cost down to around seventy thousand.
Wow.
Personnel?
Nothing.
Mining zoning?
Uh, we had the, we met last week for two things on the next agenda we made in September.
All right. Public safety, Jason, you got any?
I have a few.
You got calls of service, thank you very much in there. Public works?
Oh, just, uh, should we try the first part of Monday later this week?
You have to have a three day notice, so he can email you guys tomorrow because you, we need to have a meeting, so we'll email you when the dates are.
Yeah, we'll find the time that works for him. We're just saying sooner than later.
Ready?
Uh, no, they're doing a Zoom update type thing, but there haven't really been the formal meetings, so.
Roll call?
Um, met in your pocket, they continue to work on that on twenty-five year...
Um, minutes in your pocket, they continue to work on that on twenty-five year plan, so.
Still one eighty? How's it going back there?
It's going.
Good. Transit advisory committee, no report tonight. Communications, no communications. Anybody wanna use the open mic? The open mic.
A motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn. We have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls, we are adjourned.
I don't want you on, you know, missing the cool part.
I know, the thing is, I've.